Good evening, welcome to the joint meeting of the Westford Portable Committee and the Westford Fletcher Library Trustees. Calling together order at 6:32 reminder that this is a recorded session, anything that you say or type into the chat box will be made part of the official record. With that in mind, I would ask Buffy to please call the roll.
Okay, I was trying to record, so I'll, I mean, I'll see who I didn't get here, but Derek's here, Fleckner?
Here.
Roach?
Here.
Secor?
Here.
Siegel is not here, Teal?
Here.
Is Cook not here?
She is not correct.
Okay, and she'll be absent tonight, Scott?
That's right, yes.
Okay. Hazelton?
Here.
Karpinski?
Yes.
Patton, did I see Mike?
No, Mike is not, he has to work today or tonight.
Okay. Roberts?
Here.
Winberg?
Here.
Zagowitz?
Here.
Berlinsky? Did I see, no? Perkins, I saw, right?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Leadberg?
Here.
Rainville?
Here.
Kristen Lass is not here. Goodwin?
Here.
McRory?
Here.
Luzitis? I thought I saw, pretty sure I saw.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Febrrier?
I'm here.
Thank you. Ansalone? Not here? Okay, Sal not here, Tucker not here, Welcome It's Courtney?
Here.
And Bono Bunker not here? Okay, we're ready.
Okay, thanks. So I guess first we have the approval of minutes from our October 6th meeting, are there any amendments or changes? If there are, then I'd ask for a motion to accept.
One question, I forgot about it. There was a comment that said something about, oh, I saw it, then I moved on and I don't see it now.
I do that all the time.
I think there was something about the wording, oh, here it is. Under item three reports, OPM CHA report.
Okay.
There, well, there's a paragraph E and I saw this last night and then Jennifer confirmed something for me, but I don't think we said last month the parenthetical item, the smaller bricks which match the current building are more expensive.
Wait a second, I've lost where you are.
Oh, item three reports A point two point E.
Oh, I don't have that on what I typed up. Let me see.
This is the October 6th.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm looking at November 3rd, isn't that what we're doing tonight?
No, no, October 2nd.
That's the agenda.
Oh, my apologies, okay, let me open up. You know, I'll just take notes.
October 6th.
Yeah, let me see if I can. I see, we had two drafts, my apologies.
But the other option is that Jennifer can can resolve it tonight when she gives her report. And we can leave it, we can leave it as this, but when I looked at it last night, I didn't think that was correct and.
I'd rather correct it.
We do have, we do have information, but um.
What should it say then, Jennifer, do you have a copy in front of you?
I have that copy in front of me. I would just delete the parenthetical statement. Yes, there's two parenthetical statements. Oh. And and the second parenthetical statement is also. So the, delete the first parenthetical statement because it's not really accurate.
The one, the one that I have in parentheses, is that right?
Yep, the smaller bricks.
Yep, got it.
And then the second parenthetical, we were talking about over a delay, that really is all related to point D, not point E.
Where I said Mike asked to have it considered?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll move, is, do you want it dropped or kept?
I, I think it may be better to to remove it.
Okay. That's fine, I'll just remove it and rather than try to put it up under D as a parenthetical statement.
Is that it, Jean?
Yes, thank you.
Is there motion to accept the report as amended?
Duncan?
I have a motion first.
No, motion to approve. The minutes as as amended.
I'll second that.
So that's Jim, Jim and Chris, right?
Yes. I guess, please call the roll then.
One second, I'm scribbling.
Oh, it's okay.
Okay. Um, Derek's, hi, Fleckner?
Hi.
Roach?
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you for reminding us, abstain. Secor? Siegel not here, Teal?
I.
Cook is not here, Hazelton?
Hi.
Karpinski?
Hi.
Patton is not here, Roberts?
Hi.
Winberg?
Hi.
Zagowitz?
Hi.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, zero, one.
Okay, thanks. Next onto the reports from the OPM, I presume that's on to you, Jennifer?
Yes, it is. I'm going to share my screen to start off. And before I kick off, can people see my screen?
It's very small.
I'm gonna zoom in, but I just want to make sure, okay. So I'm gonna run through our monthly update. And so the significant update items are that we've had some major activities. If you're seeing, when you see some photographs later on this, you'll see the elevator shaft has begun construction. We're pouring the base of the column pads in concrete and installing base plates. There's been installation of conduits which are for future solar connections, photovoltaic connections, as we are solar ready. We don't have those, but we are starting the conduits that allow us for that in the future. And also material compaction behind the foundation walls and around the column pads. Had no safety incidents. And there were two items that were discussed at length at the last meeting, you're gonna hear about both of them, but in particular, the potential of schedule increase in schedule, we are working through an analysis of that to understand if this is justified, but then also if there, if it is justified to evaluate alternative approaches. So some of the specifics, we have a financial update, this aligns with what you see in Ellen's report, I'm going to let her get into this in more detail, but the, there have been some there's been some monthly spend, but in general, we don't have any additional proposed change orders. And that is, as the summary shows, we had some change orders that have already been approved or rejected from, that's from one through seven, from eight onward, we have a series that are pending, some of which we have recommended to the town for approval, they're within the town right now, the town manager's office. But then, more importantly, we have a number that are under review with CHA and Fine Gold Alexander, and as a team collectively, we review these each week. And the PCO 13 is the one that has the potential schedule impact and the brick I'm going to speak about in just a moment. And its potential impact, so the schedule currently, our schedule is on, we are currently on schedule, but we have two potential schedule risks right now. And so PCO 13 is a potential schedule delay, that is the steel issue. And in summary, I don't have a clear clean cut answer for you tonight, we are working through this diligently, going through the material that has been provided by Hutter. We have worked closely with Fine Gold to review this and we are also running through the schedule in detail to understand if, what is on the critical path and what can be made up with this. So that topic continues to be under review. The second topic is the brick issue. So we have formally provided what is called a construction change directive to Hutter for them to proceed with the standard modular brick. And that by, by asking them to proceed, we have made this decision, we have made that decision in part with the town manager's office and also with the design team. People should be aware that what this allows us in this decision is that the brick that is on the oldest, most historic portion of the library is closest in size and shape to the standard modular. And also, we are able to color match to what is on the oldest historic part of the library. And so that is our decision, the Mason is has argued the the nomenclature, however, they have agreed to move forward and proceed, they are formally have informed us about working under protest while we work through the cost dispute. But that issue remains open, so this methodology that we have chosen is so that the project can continue without a delay and the material has been released so that everything moves forward. I, I know that there's some questions on this, so I can stop here and answer some questions.
Jimmy, you go first. Jim, you're on mute.
Damn it, thank you, I was just probably the same thing everybody else is wondering, what is the nature, what is the nature of their dispute?
Currently, they're claiming that there is a conflict of text on between the drawings and specs. At this point in time, we feel that there is not a conflict, however, we're still just working through that resolution, I think it just takes time to work through that resolution, they have stated their case and we have placed our case back and so we this is part of the process, this methodology of having a construction change directive allows everything to move forward and the construction process to move forward so that we don't have a schedule delay. And working under protest, what that means is that we just keep track of the time and hours that they're working on the job site related to this matter.
Okay, so to be clear, there, there's two different sizes and colors of brick for the existing building, then the original and the newer portions of the library?
No, that, the oldest portion of the library as well as the 1990s edition, both have the same approximate size. The oldest portion of the library, sizes of bricks weren't exactly the same as they are today because of the age of that, but, but they're approximately the same size. So there isn't really a change in size, what we, there was a question of whether we should be using a size called Norman, that was a design discussion brought up in the history of the project, but it was, the decision was made before we went out to bid to utilize modular or standard. Modular standard is the same size to each other.
Okay. Terrific, thank you.
So the 55, 556, that is the, that's the protest amount?
Yes.
Okay, so that may or may not become a a change order.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions, any other hands? Okay. Oh, yeah, there we go, Tom, okay.
Sorry, I'm slow. So what is the process for the resolution of this issue?
I believe that a formal response is being put together from the design team, that is the next step, the, we have published a construction change directive, so the process moves forward of construction and Hutter prepared revised proposed change order. It was previously over $70,000 and and now it is at $55,000 and we right now, the design team will prepare, they are preparing a response to that as to why they believe it is. And Leah, I will let you speak to this, but why they believe the documents show ownership of this scope. Is there anything you want to add to that, Leah? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
That's pretty much the, the scope, we're working with CHA and the Mason to determine if that cost can be reduced. The conflict was primarily between language in the specs versus language on the drawings, however, there is additional language in the specs that covers the drawings, which has been our argument. So we're still working with Mason to determine that disagreement.
My, my, my issue is we're, I assume there's an ambiguity somewhere, or they're claiming there's an ambiguity somewhere. And I think you said it was in where was the ambiguity?
So the specifications did call for the Norman sized brick, however, the drawing is very, very clearly called for the standard modular. There is language within the specification that says what the process is supposed to be when there is a discrepancy between the specifications and the drawings. That didn't happen during the bid period, that the process was supposed to be taken up by the bidders to clarify that discrepancy. That didn't happen, so there is also language within the specification that says if that question wasn't asked, then this next, next part of the procedure should happen as far as what should have been carried, the larger amount, the more expensive product, so that is what we're still discussing now was was that additional language from the specification, so that answers your question.
But, but I mean, in the end, who, who makes the final determination?
To.
Well, I mean, if you can't come to an agreement, who, who makes the agreement for everybody?
The process is that the the design team will make a recommendation to approve or to reject this and and then if if the contractor still feels that there's a dispute, contractually, the town of Westford's contract with Hutter Construction, which is what the subcontractors are bound to, does not allow for mediation or arbitration, it requires litigation and that really does seem like a pretty extreme scenario here. But that would be the process, they if they continue to dispute the.
Are you off at Tom?
Well, and also who was responsible for the discrepancy?
The, the standard of care to the drawings is not for perfection, there is meant to be, there is likely to be conflicts like this, this is why we have an RFI process and that's why there is language that the Fine Gold team had added to their drawings, if there is a discrepancy, what the process is. And so we are going through that process right now, I it, it, it does take time because we are just going back and forth between them. But that, we are following the process that the contract has as well as Massachusetts General Law for Public Construction and and the standard of care that is, the drawings are held to is not perfection, it's.
So we're, we're, I got confused, sorry. Which, the spec or the drawing had the incorrect information?
The spec had the older information.
Okay, so you just talked about the drawing not being necessarily perfection.
No, the documents, all the documents, the spec is part of the document set.
Yes, and that is, the entirety is supposed to be used together, so contract or construction documents, construction drawings, and the specifications are meant to be one complete package. One does not supersede the other.
So it's up to the contractor to catch the discrepancies?
That is why we have a process of what we call RFIs, which are requests for information.
That was a yes or no question.
Sounds like just.
I've been on the other side of this where I had to produce these things.
I guess, I guess, I guess, I mean, honestly, I'm really worried about who's at fault because in the end, it gets sorted out with the process and I don't want to waste time tonight going into, I mean, I'm saying, I don't want to spend time tonight going into that.
I'm actually going after if we get stuck with any of this money.
Fair enough. Jean?
But I'm going after.
I don't think with that, yeah, I agree, Scott, not to talk about that tonight, but I just wanted to ask, Leah, you said that you're looking to reduce the 55, 536. I'm thinking you mean that you're looking to get it to zero.
Yes.
Okay, not to have something in between, right?
Ultimately, the goal would be to get it to zero, yes.
Because you feel that the specs and the drawings together state that the, that if there's a discrepancy, the higher price prevails. And that should be the standard size brick, period.
That has been, that has been our line to date.
And if anything in the drawings and specs be extra special, if anything in there says to match existing, that would be another positive reinforcement.
And there, there is potentially some language to that effect too, Jean.
Okay.
I'm not trying to cut you off, Tom, but understand that one of the issues is this may go to unlikely, but may go to his litigation. You don't want to have anybody admitting guilt or whatever on this call, so that's.
That's a good point.
If it's, if it's not zero, we're about it when that time comes.
Okay.
Jim, I want to get this over with quickly.
I can put my hand.
Jimmy, you're on mute.
Damn it, there it goes again. Again, I was just, I was just gonna say, this, this isn't something that's unheard of. You know, in the industry to have that, that, that kind of catch all in there, so my sense, my gut sense is to have a sub that has a giant part of the project staring them in the face and that there's two, there's, there might be a little conflicting information in the drawings. This stuff should have been brought to our attention way back when, by them, not, not just sort of allowed to fester and have it come up at this point, and, and again, I think this, what Leah was, was stating is, it's, it's kind of an industry standard that you'd always want to do the, you know, that, that we, we're always, well, the contractors generally going to be put on the hook for the, for the greater quantities, better quality, that kind of stuff, so I don't know, I think we just I'll stop talking, we can move on, how about that?
Yeah, I think, let, let the process take its course and we're, we're about it if, if it does not work out. Otherwise, we just make possible trouble in an open meeting with comments that we shouldn't made, so with that in mind, I guess, move on to whatever you have next, Jennifer?
Good, so just moving forward, just, this is a slightly longer list of activities that are going on including some safety activities and we mobilization of the site for the Mason and we had a site visit by the MBLC as well as some upcoming activities. And so just moving forward, we continue to have, now we're up to 191 submittals and with RFIs, we are up to 59 RFIs. There, as I mentioned earlier, we have no safety updates and I'm just gonna run through some photographs. So this is the progress of the elevator pit, we have formwork and rebar happening here, as everyone may remember, we have a entirely brand new elevator in the building and it's not in the same location as the previous elevator, so this is in the addition area. And this is steel beams, this is a deconstruction of some of the steel beams that are in the older part as we prepare for new work. And sorry, it's a bit slow, I'm going back through here, but you're seeing some backfilling compaction. That's, this is also a view where you see the elevator install, the elevator shaft work going on and these concrete squares, as you see them, this is where the column pads that we mentioned earlier, and you can see there's sort of steel spikes going up and that's how the steel columns will be attached and then you can see the perimeter wall of the new addition as well. So where this truck is, is approximately where the new entry doors will be from the parking area to, to the library. And this is actually, I think that tag is, tag is wrong, or the photograph is wrong, that is not the solar installation, we'll make an edit to this before we publish this to the library. And here is another photograph of some steel plates and some grouting. And that is the concrete that you're seeing below it is the concrete pad for the columns. And this is, we did have a site visit on, from the MBLC, as we mentioned, that was on the 24th, so there, if you have not met Andrea Bonabunker, that's her in between Buffy and Ellen and that was part of our requirement for the MBLC, they make periodic site visits as part of their process to for the funding for the project. So I'm gonna stop sharing. Can you, oh, before you stop, can you go back to slide seven? Slide. On page seven? Page seven, page seven. Yeah. Oh, that's six, yeah, that one. So during design, we talked about whether or not we could save the old stone wall and not cover it with drywall. And there was discussion that, well, maybe it's in bad shape. Is this one of those opportunities to not cover it with drywall? I think it may be better for Leah to speak to that.
There will be some areas, Jean, the furthest portion near the existing windows in the far end of this photo where that stone actually will be exposed in the stairwell, so it's not as front to center as perhaps we were looking at at earlier portions of the design, because it's one of the back of house stairwells, but it will be exposed there and there will potentially be some other areas. one of the back of house stairwells, but it will be exposed there and there will potentially be some other areas where we won't be putting the drywall, but most of this is planned to be covered in drywall for office purposes and such. And this whole, the majority of this that we're looking at is essentially back of house areas.
But you, uh, the way you speak of the stone wall, like it's ugly or something. And I think it's beautiful. And I would think that the people working in the library, even if it's in their office, would love the history because all of the librarians seem to care about the history of the building.
It's a, it's a conversation that we can continue to have. I do not think that it is ugly. That is not the purpose of the the chip wall at all. Um, more for the function of the offices so that there are things surfaces to hang things on and such, but it is a conversation that we can continue to have with the library.
And the committee?
And the, yes, yes, the interiors committee.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, I might have missed it, but what was this stated the issue on the uh steel? It was very quick.
Oh, um, we are working through the um, right here. So we have Ben, Hutter has published a potential um schedule delay, so we are um going through that um information, looking at sort of day by day um of the timeline that they have proposed and also um looking at the critical path items on their schedule to understand if the um delay is justified firstly, and then if it was justified, if there's a potential approach for um mitigating that.
Maybe, I'm sorry, I, I did get that. Uh, but what is the timeframe for the next status?
Um, I, I believe, um, I'm hoping, hopeful that by next month, our next joint committee meeting will have an um um some resolution to this. Um, we had hoped to have that by the end of last week, but we are still working through that, so um there was a lot of back and forth over the past um calendar week on that.
Okay, so is that, is that for questions? Okay, so thanks, uh Jennifer, as I go to Ellen next for directory report. Trying to picture the agenda in my mind.
That is correct.
Unmute here. So um I, I want to thank Jean for working so hard with Christina, myself and Jennifer on the FFE. Um, we've made great progress and I hope by the end of this week, we'll really have settled on the furnishings, finishes packet. Um, and that launches a critical deadline where uh Stefura will be um doing the specifications and um putting together everything we need for a bid packet. And um by January fifth, the joint meeting in January, we um should be able to um have a, a joint vote on who we, we contract with. Um, probably under state procurement or the MHEC contract. And then the following Tuesday, January the thirteenth, the select board can vote on that contract. And then I'll be working very hard on um on all of the final procurement documents so that we get everything ordered uh in order to have it be coming in a, a year from now. Um, this is shelving, this is furnishings, this is office supplies. We're counting inches of collections. Um, there's some very lovely, exciting colorways, so that's all wonderful. Um, Jennifer um did mention that Andrea Bonabunker, our library building consultant from the Board of Library Commissioners uh came, she, she walked through the temporary site as well as the construction site. Um, she said the temporary site was exemplary. You know, once again, we're so grateful that we could get all of our collections in one space. Many libraries have things in three or four different areas and um so we're very grateful to have such nice accommodations while we're offsite. Um, we'll be working with Jennifer on a few more things that are town side scope. Um, we have the AV preparations for the level one meeting room, which will be available after hours, which will have Westford Cat support. We have um security features which we want to have um in concert with all of the swipe cards and security and camera features that are used throughout other town buildings. And then finally, we'll have signage which needs to be harmonious with our color palette and our colorways. So those are um uh upcoming sub items that are ahead of us. I will just mention and we'll see it when we get to the second page. Um, the governor did release the one hundred thousand dollars for AV that um Representative Arciero uh secured for us. So we're really thrilled that that money has been released in an uncertain time. So we're, um, we're glad to have that. So um, that's what we're doing. And um, I'm also, you know, meeting tomorrow, Jeff with Mike Edwards and um we're working on, you know, maintenance for the new building because I'm projecting seven months of FY twenty-seven in the new building, paying for electricity, paying for utilities, uh having some maintenance costs. So um, that's been a challenge to secure some of those costs. And I'm continuing to work on that. And so I got through that without coughing. And I, I can answer questions if you have any, or we can move on to the warrant.
I'm not seeing any hands up, so I think we can move on to the warrant.
Okay, so I'm gonna scroll down to it where you see this red placeholder. This um, this November invoice did come today. So this warrant totaling six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents um is uh, is all in hand. And I'll just move down so you can see the particulars. Just a little bit further. So here is the warrant. The regular CHA, Fine Gold Alexander. Um, the Stefura is the twenty thousand nine hundred. Hutter Construction, our lease for November. Um, we have UTS, which is testing, Wakefield Arms is our storage. And WSP is also commissioning. And here is the total.
Any questions? I'm not singing it, so with that in mind, is there a motion to approve um the let's get back up to the topic, I get the right, the right number.
I'm getting back up to it. Here we go.
So is, is there a motion to approve the warrants, invoices and payments totaling six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars? Sorry, six eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Uh, as outlined through, in A through, through I.
So moved?
That's Mary Ann's, is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And Glenn's a second. So uh, what should I, that Buffy, could you call the roll?
Yep, here we go. Derek's eye, Fleckner.
I.
Roach.
I.
Secor.
Hi.
Siegel not here, Teal.
I.
Cook not here, Hazelton.
I.
Carpinskey.
I.
Patton not here, Roberts.
I, here, yeah.
Wimberg.
Yes.
Zegowitz.
Hi.
Ten zero zero.
Thank you. Uh, I gather, writing up proposals, uh, proposed changes, Ellen?
Correct. And, and I will, as you approve the executed change orders, we'll have a, a growing list that uh becomes a historical record um in, in future agenda. Right now, you've only approved that change order number one.
So we have all, no old business unless somebody wants to raise something that isn't here, that we forgot. In that case, uh, new business.
So if you can approve the September Amplifun Report, uh, we just received word it's been renamed for the future. I think it's gonna be called a UNA grant report in the future. But if you will approve that, then I'll report on the posting.
Are there any questions on the, on the report? None appearing as a motion to uh approve?
So moved.
Second.
Glenn with a motion, Jean seconded. Uh, so Buffy, please call the roll.
Derek's eye, Fleckner.
I.
Roach.
I.
Secor.
Hi.
Siegel is absent, Teal.
I.
Cook is absent, Hazelton.
I.
Carpinskey.
I.
Patton is absent, Roberts.
I.
Wimberg.
I.
Zegowitz.
Hi.
Ten zero zero.
Great, thank you.
So um, the, this is the screenshot of the posting that you voted on tonight, which is warrant twenty-six nineteen. Um, we have um aggregated interest on our grant funds of a hundred and fifty-five, seven sixty-seven and one cent. Um, I did um provide a, a row in red showing the contingency budget and the percentage of it that we have spent um as we go forward in the project. And I have a check number here to the right, which is um uh summing the amount that we have transferred out of contingency. Um, right now, contingency has um transferred to testing to Hutter Construction, which for some reason that number is not blue. I'll get that corrected next month and to water monitoring. Um, so at this point, you can see the percentage spent um column and the very far right column is again a listing of the warrant that you approved tonight. And as we move further down, um, we have received sixty percent of our original grant from the Board of Library Commissioners. The, the most recent disbursement was June. Uh, we expect the escalation of grant payment close to the end of the project. Uh, the foundation has raised almost nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. We have received the one hundred thousand dollars from the governor's budget. We have the aggregated interest. Um, next Monday is a meeting on CPA and I hope to have stained glass transoms um ri- um restored um under, with CPA funds. Um, and then again, mass save our uh reimbursements and or rebates more correctly that we will get um at construction completion and one year post occupancy when our performance measures prove that we've met the massive um guidelines. So we are now um anticipating that the taxpayers' cost will be twenty-two million four twenty-one. Um, last month it was twenty-two million four fifty-three. And we hope to continue to see that number lower.
I, I think this is really helpful. Um despite, I think, Tom, you didn't, didn't you ask this last month? It's just like the one, what you had in mind?
Yeah, no, this is great.
I, I appreciate
Thank you, thank you.
Your, your patience, Tom, because I needed the posting to do one thing, but I do understand what you want it to do. And I think, I think this red line, you know, this red alert line down here is um being called out separately will help us really keep track of it.
Yes, I, I really like it. Thank you very, thank you.
Excellent. But it is a handy one, one screen tool to look at, so thanks.
Yeah.
So here, here are future, future meetings coming up.
And um just so everyone's aware, I think it's that January fifth meeting. One of that agenda items on that will be the request for this committee to vote on um the furniture um scope, which will be um multiple. Um, it'll be a, a large um funding request um and to uh engage in contracts with the different vendors for the um furniture as well as um uh shelving and um many other various items um as they come up. And Jean has a question?
Uh, yes, um, is, is this committee interested in seeing a presentation of the furniture and finishes? Or are you fine with what the subcommittee comes up with?
I defer the trustees and that one is, is their building.
I have no color sense.
I would enjoy seeing.
Yeah. But.
Um, so I, I would think that um one of the tools that we could use to do that, to present to, um we do have um digital um uh images of the materials. I will tell you that digital goes only so far. It's a bit challenging to only see them in digital. Um, but perhaps we could um share that. Um, it, it will probably take up, this meeting is generally about thirty minutes to forty-five with a minutes with a pretty full agenda. I think it may be um ideal as a meeting not combined with this because it, it will probably take, um, I could imagine some time to go through it. Um, and we would do that sort of area by area because that's how we've been conceiving of that. Um, and then um we could um um perhaps have the physical samples available for people to um to look at um separately, but a, a digital presentation might be the ideal way to um share that information.
Well, given that, Jennifer, I, I will defer to you and say, I think I trust you. Do I want a longer meeting? No.
Couldn't we just send the trustees a packet? Whether it's, whether it's, you know, a, at the ninety-five percent or at the hundred percent point?
Could, could you make them available at the temporary library location, the physical samples? And anyone, even the public can look at it?
Yeah, we could have a tour and if, if we have a quorum, I'll post it as a meeting. I think it might be more fun for you to actually see the samples for level one, level two, level three.
Now, I, I, I agree. If we're gonna look at it, we should look at the real thing because you can't tell textures and so forth from screenshots.
But we won't
I think that's a good idea as well.
Yeah, you'll need to have pictures of the furniture.
Yeah, we do, we do have, we do have those. We can combine the two, I think.
So if we were to um have a meeting at the temporary library um and have a, a presentation for the trustees, um, that's our best um avenue forward. Um, I don't believe it's currently in the scope of Stefura, um, so I will um talk further. Um, Leah and I can talk offline about that, but Stefura has created um a, all sorts of, they have all the physical samples um as well as um some really um very helpful um packages that we can be sharing. That's what we can share with you, but then also we can use that as the sort of presentation tool with the physical samples in front of them. But um I think if there's a, well, having that meeting separate of this meeting and invite, um, finding a, a time that works for the trustees is probably the better approach to that than um combined.
A, you know, it could be even in the daytime. It, depending on who wants to actually see these physical samples, but we'll, I'll, I'll send out um a survey and see what works best for everyone.
Okay.
So we'll get that data later on. Um, it's, this, this is meeting, the trustees keep on meeting after this or is this the end of it?
We stay on.
Okay, so I guess there's a, a motion from the town building committee uh to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I guess, could you call the role of?
That was Chris and Jean, Chris and Jean, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right, Derek's eye Fleckner.
I.
Roach.
I.
Zekor.
Hi.
Siegel is absent, Teal.
I.
Hook is absent, Hazelton.
Hi.
Karpinski.
Hi.
Patton is absent, Roberts.
Hi.
Wimberg.
Hi.
Zegowitz.
Hi.
Ten zero zero and we adjourned at. I'm looking for some clock, seven twenty-two.
Great, thanks.